Just gonna allow her to talk. Jesse, can you hear us?
Yes, now I can.
Okay, alright. Okay, I'm just, I'm sorry, not to be, I don't want to offend you, but I'm gonna put you back on mute so that we can start the meeting, okay?
No problem, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Alright, just before we get started, Rich is, he texts me and he's gonna be a few minutes late. He had some minor issue he had to take care of, so I'm sure he's gonna, he's gonna dial in shortly. We're gonna get, you know, we're gonna get started without him. But hopefully he does join us. I'm not sure what time he's gonna dial in, but I'm sure he's gonna join soon. Is it okay, Danelle, if we start without Rich?
Yeah, we can start without Rich. And then when he comes in, I'll just announce that he's there, just for...
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, just for, just for meeting purposes?
Yes.
Alright, let me... Hold on a second while I get situated. Alright. Alright, let's get meeting, let's get started with the meeting of the Vernon Township MUA for September 17, 2020. Are we recording, Danelle?
Uh, we should, it should automat, yes, we're recording, it automatically records.
Alright, so this is the meeting of the Vernon Township MUA for September 17, 2020. Statement of compliance pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act. Adequate notice of this regular meeting has been provided to the public and the press on January 20, 2020, by delivering to the press such notice and the posting the same at the Municipal Building and filed with the Office of the Township Clerk. We'll salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance...
Allegiance to the flag.
To the flag. United States of America.
And to the Republic of America.
Which stands, one nation...
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
Liberty.
Liberty and justice. Okay, roll call of members, Danelle?
Mike Fury.
Here.
Dave McDermott.
Here.
Andrew Pitsker.
Present.
Kristen Wheaton.
Present.
Paul Carney.
Present.
Dean Murphy.
Here.
And our professionals are Collette Burrell, our recording secretary, myself, Don Albright, administrator.
And we're just gonna wait on Rich, Rich Wenner, who's gonna join us in a few minutes. That's the only professionals that are on. We'll get right started. Make a motion to open to the public.
I'll make the, I'll make the motion open to the public.
I'll second it.
Motion by Paul Carney, seconded by Dave McDermott, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, Danelle, please open it to the public.
Hey. Go ahead, Jesse, I think you can speak now.
Yes, I can, thank you. Will you be opening again at the end of the meeting, or is this the only public session?
We normally only do it in the beginning of the meeting, Jesse, but if it's necessary, if you wanna, we can, we can open it up at the end of the meeting, too.
Okay, I just don't know what your policy is with regard to items on the agenda or not.
We can, we'll open it up to the public at the end of the meeting prior to adjournment.
Okay, no problem, thank you.
That's it. We don't have anybody else.
That's it, Jesse?
Yes, that's it, sorry.
Okay, okay, alright, good. Alright, nobody else? Do I entertain a motion to close to the public?
I motion to close the comments in front of the public?
I'll second that motion.
So, motion by Andy Pitsker, seconded by Dave McDermott, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Next on the agenda is approval, number six is approval of bills. Did everyone have an opportunity to... Review the bills? And if there's any, any questions?
I do have one question.
Go ahead, Andy.
When it comes to the Sentinel system, do we have any other bills for getting the system up and running coming forward?
Um, the system's currently up and running, which is great. I can check it every single day now. We do have a couple of bills for some minor things that need to be done, so I have another, an additional line on this PO for about $2,400. That's moving some of the, like, the actual boxes at some of the lift stations over to where some other boxes are. So that'll take care of that. And like I said, everything's up and running as it currently exists. It's just a matter of making sure that when we hit cold weather, that it's still gonna be able to function, because those boxes need to be heated for the ones that are outside and not indoors. So, like I said, we'll have about like $2,300, $2,400 left on an additional PO for that.
Okay, very good. Is that being pushed down to the capital expenditure side?
Yes, that portion. So some of this, a big chunk of this was put under capital, but the other one, another portion, I couldn't put under capital, because it would be considered, you know, operating expenses. So anything that's gonna be like permanent, any rewiring that we had to do, any initial setups we had to do, I can put under capital. But the others would be like, you know, general operating stuff.
Perfect. Thank you.
Well, Andy, just to add to that, Ray Cronetto, who did the work, supplied a summary of what he did. I don't know if Danelle had an opportunity to send that around to everybody.
I ju, I just read it, Mike, when I, when I walked in the office.
That's fine. He, he has, with his bill, his invoice that he submitted, he also gave a summary of what he did. And I believe, Danelle, correct me if I'm wrong, he also sent you another document of things that need to be done, or that can be done?
Yes.
That were not done.
Yeah, so we, um, one of them is one of the ones I added to this, and it's moving of the, I forget the word, but it's the actual, like, thing, it's like in a box that has to run the system. Sorry, my brain's not functioning. And that has to be moved, moved over at one of the stations, like I said, for, for purposes for when it gets to colder weather.
Yeah, yeah.
He did give me, we, he and I met and we went over some things that need to be done at the lift stations, just moving forward. Each individual lift station, there was a couple of things he recommended, and then things that we should be doing over time. So, um, you know, that's like for future projects that we can plan out for the coming years, which I thought was really...
Did he give you anything in writing, Danelle, about that, or all I received is what he did?
No, for the, no, because those are the things we just went over in person, where he came by to show me how to get Sentinel system for tracking purposes. But no, that kind of stuff, I didn't get in writing. I just asked, you know, it was kind of off the cuff. I just asked him like, hey, while you were out there, you know, did you see anything?
What do we need?
The address. Right.
Okay. Any other questions? Any, anybody else has any, any... The resolution is 20-35, approving payment of the bills. Vernon Township hereby approve the bills totaling $5,592.55 to be paid to the corresponding vendors of the Vernon Township MUA. Anybody wanna make a motion to approve the bills?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
And I'll second that.
The motion by Dave McDermott, seconded by Andy Pitsker. Roll call?
Mike Fury.
Yes.
Kristen Wheaton.
Yes.
Dave McDermott.
Yes.
Andrew Pitsker.
Yes.
Paul Carney.
Yes.
Did you get everybody?
Yep.
Yeah, we just need the five votes.
Okay, got it. Alright, next on the agenda is approval of the minutes from July 2, 2020, for regular meeting. Did everyone have an opportunity to read the copy of the minutes?
Yes.
And is there any concerns, questions?
I have no questions.
Neither do I.
They're clean by me.
Kristen?
No comment.
Uh, anybody wanna make a motion to approve the minutes from July 2, 2020?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Paul Carney, seconded by Dave McDermott. Do we need a roll call, or is this...
You could do all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Anybody abstain? Next on the agenda is our, really the main reason why we're here. We're gonna talk about the request for qualifications or proposals, responses for the engineering services.
Hey, Mike, I just wanted, Rich has entered the meeting. I'm just asking if...
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Alright, Rich, Rich Wenner, hi, Rich, how you doing? Thanks for...
Hey, guys.
Hey, Rich.
Alright, Rich. Everything's alright, Rich?
Everything's good, I appreciate it. Yeah, I'm here if you need me.
No problem, Rich. We'll, we'll, we'll be tapping into you soon.
Alright.
Okay, so, we, Kristen put together an excellent spreadsheet, a scoring of all the proposals. There's a list of them in the, on the agenda of all, everyone's responses. The only question I have, there's six of those. And I counted seven, Danelle, on the bottom of the agenda. Am I missing something?
I'm sorry.
I think one was a tally.
Yeah, the first page is a tally, so there's each individual sheet, and then...
What he might be referring to is somebody handwrote. Did you recopy what somebody handwrote?
Yeah. Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, somebody...
I think, I think the one in color. Is that, is that the one that's tally? One with the green?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, there you go, I misunderstood. So, so the first, so just to, just to get everyone on the same page. The first one on the list, Danelle, I'm sorry, is, is, correct me if I'm wrong, is this a tally of all of our?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize, I didn't know that. So, what do I...
Six are the individual ones. I didn't...
Alright, I, I...
Yeah.
Alright, I, I apologize. I was confused. So the fir, the first, okay, I get it. That makes sense. So the first one is tallying up all the scores. And then there's all of us responding, and I really appreciate everybody responding. That's great, we got them in time. So, what I'm gonna do is, since Kristen put this together and she sent up some follow-up emails about this, I'm gonna turn it over to her, because she's gonna be really the one that put this together. And she's the one, and what we're gonna do when we go ahead and interview the engineering firms, she's gonna take the lead on all the engine, all the questioning. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Kristen. Kristen, why don't you explain how you did this? And, and if it, if it worked out the way you envisioned it. So I'll just turn it over to you.
Well, I mean, I think it's up to the board to decide whether it worked out the way you envisioned it. But what we did was, we assigned a rating and ranking of one through five for the individual firms across a variety of criteria, or which are the things that we had indicated to the firms that we would be evaluating them on in our request for qualifications. And that includes experience and reputation in wastewater collection and conveyance, experience with DEP and wastewater permitting, experience with the New Jersey Water Bank, or its predecessor, the New Jersey Environmental Infrastructure Trust, and their price proposal, and any other factors that may, that may have presented themselves as we were reviewing their proposals. We had discussed this at our last meeting, so two weeks ago, we did kind of have a draft of this, and we discussed the, the weightings. We all came to agreement on the weightings of the different criteria. And so, each of us individually went through and assigned a score to the six, the five firms that, that proposed to us. And those were submitted to Danelle on Friday, or by Friday, and Danelle went through and, and tallied up for the, the board totals. And so, this process that we have just gone through is basically a screening process that we'll use to determine the firms that we want to interview. And following the interview, we would then make a selection of a firm. I guess, you know, there's possibility that, that we decide that we wanna have more than one firm on a shortlist. But as we'd laid it out initially, the expectation was that we would select one firm from following interviews. So, so through the screening process, we came up with Van Cleef and Dewberry as our top engineering, as our, as our top rankings of engineering firms. Mont McDonald is three. PS, Paulis, PSNS, Paulus Sokolowski and Sardar is fourth, and American Forensic Engineering was fifth. And so, in tonight's meeting, then, we need to confirm who it is that we wanna invite in for interviews. We want to get a letter to them or a notification to them as soon as possible, with the goal of having, conducting interviews in two weeks at our next meeting on October 1st. And so, with that in mind, at this point, I, I think we need to decide how many firms that we want to interview. And just, I guess, make sure that everybody is comfortable with the process so far, and that that they agree with, with, with the tallies and/or the, you know, the top three that, well, the, the top two or three or, or five, however you wanna rank them, the top, the rating that we've come up with for, for the firms. So, so does anybody have any questions or concerns, I guess, with, with, with what's, with what's been, you know, taking place to this point?
I, I have, I'm okay. I, I think it came on great. It, it worked out perfectly fine. There is, the two questions I, that, that are open, or, or which is, we, it appears like Van Cleef and Dewberry are the two top firms that we identified. We obviously have a history with Mont McDonald. If we do a, or have them do a presentation and, and question and answer, I guess the, ultimately, I decide if we're gonna do, we're gonna pick the top three firms and just focus on them, or, and then give them all an opportunity to, to present, which I think is a fair and reasonable way of doing it. The other concern I have, and I reached out to, there was a question of, of some kind of conflict with Dewberry. Dewberry is the, currently, they, they do work with Mountain Creek. Shout to Rich Wenner, and he, he gave us some, some feedback. I wanted to ask Rich, and I, I think we got to ask the question now, and decide for certain that there isn't a conflict. And I, I, Rich, I wanted to defer to you and see what, you know, where, where you, where your thoughts are. I don't know. I know I, I sent you an email about this, you replied. I'm not sure if we shared it with everybody on the board. I think we did, I'm not certain.
I got a copy.
But, did everybody get a copy of Rich's response?
Yes.
Alright, good, I wasn't sure. So, Rich, what do you, what are your thoughts? I wanted to turn it over to you and see what your opinion is.
Sure, I appreciate that, Mike. Well, I mean, honestly, in a perfect world, you, you would have an engineer that had no professional relationship with any of the users in the sewer service area, right? I mean, for, for obvious reasons, so you don't have to worry about loyalty, for lack of a better word. So, in general, if you're looking at a, appointing an engineering firm to be the general engineer for the MUA, then that concern would only arise if there was an application, or, or an issue arising with Mountain Creek, and Dewberry was serving two masters, so to speak. Apart from that, there wouldn't be an issue, if it's, as it relates to any other potential application that came before the board. So, you know, Dewberry, I believe, has given the opinion or notified Danelle and/or Mike that, on their end, they don't see it as, as being a conflict. I think that it's difficult to say with certainty that, no, that's not a conflict. And, and my email to, to Mike, which was, I'm glad that he shared it with everybody, you know, just on a very simple level, what, and this was as related to Pump Station 2, and the idea of a special, you know, doing a special projects engineer. You know, what may be best for the MUA may not be best for Mountain Creek. And that's in terms, obviously, of, we're talking money. So, a design that may, you might have multiple designs that work, and there might be one design that's really the ideal design, but there's a cost differential between design one and design two. And because of, as it relates to the Pump Station 2 example, anyway, as to who is putting the bill, so to speak, on that project, you don't want, you don't want the scales to be tipped one way or the other, at a concern for the ultimate party who's gonna be responsible for, for paying that bill. You want the best design and the best product and the best advice given to you, knowing that it's being given to you free and unfettered, without any outside influences. And I'm not at all saying that Dewberry would, would be subjected to those outside influences, or would not give you the best advice that any other engineering firm would also give you, who did not happen to also represent Mountain Creek. But, again, the perception is gonna be there that, alright, is this really the best plan, or is this really, are we really getting the best advice when the, they're also representing Mountain Creek, which is, you know, are the largest player in our, in our, in our system. So, those are my concerns.
Alright, alright, good. Any questions for Rich? Anybody wanna follow up on any questions about this? If there's any concerns, I, like, we wanna just actually bring them out now, and, and does anybody ever had, had the same concern I have?
Mike, if I, if I may, I'm trying to jump in. I would, I personally would love to, I would personally love to hear Kristen's thoughts on that, as an engineer.
Yeah. Well, I guess, we, we did ask each firm to address the potential for conflict of interest. And I, so Dewberry did, as, as well as the others, did provide a statement on handling conflicts of interest, where they indicated that they would have a kind of firewall between, if I recall correctly, I'm looking for it now. But I guess it's, you know, it's, it's not unusual, I guess, from, from my perspective, to have occasions where a conflict of interest may arise. The first thing you wanna do is make sure that, you know, the parties are aware that there is a conflict, and then make sure that they're satisfied with how you're gonna handle that potential conflict, apparent or otherwise. And, and, yeah, usually it involves, you know, making sure that you have individual, independent people working for each client that, to make sure that they're, you know, that they're keeping, that they're giving their client unbiased, unbiased information.
And if I could just add in, I think the issue here is, is that it's for the same, the same components. It's for, it's for the pump house. It's like, as I've indicated, Dewberry did work for the National Winter Activity Center, but it was something totally unrelated to the pump house or the sewer.
Right.
But Dewberry's involvement with Mountain Creek is directly connected to the project. So it, it...
Well, well, that's, that is the question. I mean, it is, you know, I wanna hear people's, are there concerns, and can there be potential concern? I mean, it's like, it's, it is a double-edged sword, and they, they have experience with previous designs and understanding of the system, which is a benefit, but there is that, there is that potential conflict, and, and if it's, that could be resolved, and we can get past that, then then we need to, we need to determine that.
And that's what I'm saying.
I mean, we're eventually gonna determine.
Yeah. I'm just not sure if it could be resolved, since it was for the same thing.
Well, ultimately, we, we have an opinion from Rich. You know, he offered his opinion. I'm personally satisfied with his opinion. Hopefully, everyone else on the MUA is satisfied, moving forward, so we can actually, you know, have the process of interviewing them and, and then making a final selection.
I guess the one question I would bring up, Mike, is that have we had a dialogue with Joe Hesch and his lawyer, maybe, making sure that they don't see a conflict as well?
I, I believe, I had a short conversation with Mario about, you know, I was just, you know, called him up about, you know, if he had caught, you know, I was looking into the plans, and, and I made mention of, he mentioned the, the potential conflict, and, and from their side, they were looking into it with Mountain Creek, and then internally, and they, they determined, they, they would not have put a proposal on it, if there were, if they felt there was a conflict, and if their attorney said it was a conflict. I don't know if he checked with Mountain Creek. I, I have no idea. I, I, and I don't know, you know, I mean, it's, that's a factor, but we're, we're the ones that are gonna be hiring the engineering firm, and we're gonna be working with the engineering firm, and we're gonna be ultimately, the, the MUA is gonna be responsible for the final outcome. So, I mean, there is, obviously, there is a concern. I just wanna, we wanna get it out there. I just wanna make sure that everyone's comfortable before we move to the, move to the next step.
I have no problem with it.
Paul?
I'm good.
Good. So, so I guess the next question, Chris, and, and I guess we have to decide if we're, it, we, we have two of the, you know, the one, number one and number two, and then we have Mountain Cre, I'm sorry, Mont McDonald next. Do we want it, when we ask them to come to the next meeting, you know, do we wanna have, have them give a short presentation, and we ask them questions and answers? Or we not do a presentation, and we just, just go right into question and answers? And then who do we, who do we invite to the next meeting?
I guess I, my thoughts are that we would have a brief presentation. Just, I think it's helpful to, to have them kind of reiterate their experience and, and, you know, why, why they're the best firm for us. We can put a time limit on that, so that it doesn't take, you know, up, up too much
Right.
Of however much time we wanna allow. And I think also, if we're presenting them with questions now, which is, is what I was suggesting, is that we agree or formulate some questions that we want to ask the firms, and we, we pose them to them now, so that they can build those answers into their, into their presentation.
Okay. I, I agree with that.
And that'll kind of help us shortcut, it'll help us shortcut the Q and A by...
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I agree.
Yeah.
Ahead of time. So, just to, just to, so Kristen put out a couple of emails to everybody, putting, formulating some questions. If anybody has any comments on those questions, I, I personally thought they were right on the money. I don't have any issues with the last email you sent. Those, those questions are enough to, they cover all my concerns, and if they can answer all... Those those questions are enough to, they cover all my concerns and if they can answer all those, I'm okay with that. If anybody has any other additional, like, particular question they have for the firm, you know, let Kristen know fairly quickly so we can get this information out to the to the firms. So is everyone comfortable? I mean, we obviously, Mont McDonald has a familiarity with the, they're very familiar with the system. Do you want to interview Mont McDonald, Van Cleef and Dewberry? Is that, is that the the top three and invite all those three? Is everyone comfortable with that?
I think. I guess, I guess I have a curiosity here is that we we know Mont McDonald. We have some experience with Dewberry, but I really like to hear, first of all, from Van Cleef since they came up so high on the list. And give them a little bit of time so we can learn a little bit about them. So I'd like to put them at the top of the list and have the first presentation just to hear what they can bring. Based on my analysis, I mean, they've got a lot, a lot of things to offer, but I want to hear it from them.
So so if we were to do an order of presentation, we do Van Cleef, Dewberry and Mont McDonald in that order?
That would be my proposal.
Sure.
Dave is.
I mean, you know, I guess I I I'm looking at it from maybe a joined this point of view, but we've, we've had we've had issues in the past with Mont McDonald. Maybe we should ask them questions according to like fixing our issues, so to speak, with timely response, things of that nature.
Right.
You know, I mean.
Paul, what do you think?
I I I think that we should speak to Matt last. Because we could talk to the other firms, we'll get some maybe pick up some other facets and questions to ask Matt leading into this because they brings up a good point, you know, turnaround time on some of the stuff they do isn't isn't so fantastic. So, you know, we we might come up with a better line of questioning, you know, picking stuff off of the other firms and go from there.
Right. Gene, what do you, Gene, what's your opinion?
I mean, I'm I'm fine with whatever you're going to do as far as the interviews. I just, like I said, my only concern is, you know, about the conflicts, you know, just like one of the other firms noted that they had a conflict with Legends, you know, like I said, it's that's really, I mean, but as far as the interview process, you know, whichever rotation you do it in.
I I understand, I understand the concern about conflicts of interest and I, I'm not sure that we've had fully kind of talked, you know, concluded our our thoughts on on that topic, but I was astounded to learn that that Mont McDonald's has S C M U A as a client. So, yeah, there's conflicts in a variety of areas. And I think that's one of the things that might lead us to, it might lead us to pick more than one firm. You know, may maybe we, maybe we decide, you know, there's, there's not, there's no harm in that, really. We just, we shortlist how, as many as we want. And and then when we're, when we want to do some work, we we put out a proposal to 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 the firm or we ask, you know, we negotiate a a contract with the firm that we think is is not is not conflicted in in that.
That's probably.
Yeah.
That's probably a good, a good idea, but because at some point you end up seeing, you know, it's not that it's bad, but all the time, but you end up seeing, you know, the same firm doing work for everyone, so to speak.
Right. No, I I agree. Anybody, anybody else, any any comments you want to add to that? If so, if if I had to draw a conclusion, well, the order is going to be Van Cleef, Dewberry and then Mont McDonald. The the timeframe, I I'm going to throw this out there about a presentation, a short five minute presentation, five to 10, not longer than that. And then the questions will go another, you know, probably 10, 20 minutes. So we're looking at, you know, the interview process with each firm probably lasting 20 minutes to 20 minutes to 30 minutes. I know that's, that's, I mean, what does everybody think of that? Or you want to limit it to, or let them know you want to limit to a certain amount of time in the presentation and so we can get through all these because because what's going to happen is this next meeting, we're going to have to dedicate the entire meeting to this because it's going to be a pretty lengthy process.
You know, I I I think that we make make them have to put it all together in a very distinct, short period of time. Because, you know, people, myself included, sometimes have a tendency to ramble, you know, they think more words are more impressive. And I just want them to get right to the point and 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 give us a quick presentation of what they're going to do, you know, any extra verbiage or fluff they're going to throw in there. It's, 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 doesn't impress me.
Yeah.
I think.
I agree. So so.
I, but I think.
Hold on a second, Chris.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, just hold on a second. So by giving the the questions beforehand, like, like, I think Kristen nailed it and said, if you give these questions to all the firms, they're going to incorporate that into their presentation. So hopefully they'll answer all those questions in their in their presentation. And then we're just left, you know, a few of us asking a couple of questions if they needed clarification. I think that's probably the best way to do it.
Oh, yeah, no, I agree, given the questions in advance. That'll stress and streamline the process.
Yes, but that said, I don't, I don't think five minutes is enough time for them to answer.
Well, no, that, no, no, if it's a presentation.
Just to confirm the questions that were discussed, do we want to review those?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, Chris, and go over them.
Can I just add in? And then maybe if there's something, you know, like, there could be something that we haven't asked that maybe they would like to just add in, like as.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and that should be part of their presentation. If they have something specific for us, for our needs that they that they feel is a, that they're good at. I mean, that's definitely be part of their presentation. They, they'd sell themselves short if they didn't do that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we should tell them to do that. I think.
No, what I'm saying is, no, but it was sounding like it was just going to be, you know, like, answer the five questions.
No, no, yeah, it's, it's tell us, tell us why you're the best and answer our five questions. So, right, so right now, the the question one is discuss project examples that relate directly to the scope of work described in the R F Q. Question two is elaborate on your experience and lessons learned in working with N J E I T I bank slash water bank. Question three is correlate the personnel shown in your project staffing chart to the rates in your price proposal. Question four is what are some important considerations for the implementation of a septic transfer station in association with the pump station rebuild? So there are some concerns, I think, that that I had raised last time and I've been communicating with Danell intermittently on some thoughts. So I thought, you know, they they might have some be able to indicate whether they thought septic was feasible or not. Question five is while the R F Q is focused on wastewater engineering services, the M U A is now also evaluating the procurement and expansion of water supply through infrastructure currently owned and operated by Suez. In your presentation, please address your firm's capabilities to assist the M U A in this regard and whether any conflicts of interest exist for your firm. So those are the five question, the five questions that we would issue to to eat, to to the firms that were invited to interview. And then I had some.
Does anybody have any, go ahead, Kristen, go ahead.
I had just started to jot down some other thoughts that I had had, but I think they're individual questions for the firms and and I don't think that we pose them to the firms at this time. They're kind of more spontaneous during the interview.
Okay. Any anybody have, like, right now, like, we want to decide now, does any other questions or that would be, that would be appropriate that we can provide them beforehand? Like now, let's, let's, let's decide what we're going to give to them. And I guess the next step is to give that information to the three firms, invite them to the meeting. We'll try to schedule it in that order so they they understand when they're going to be presenting. And then we're going to have to figure out a way how to do that remotely, which is a challenge. But is everybody comfortable with that for the next meeting?
Yeah, I am. One thing, Kristen, I was thinking about here is, and we've had this dialogue before. Are any of these firms what you would call full service where they could take the whole package and without, they can get the contractors, they can get the like the force main right now. We've got to go to three or four different people to get the force mains taken care of for the pictures and and other things that right now, Danell is working on because Mont McDonald can't do that. Should we be asking questions like that as far as being a full service provider?
Right. So, I mean, I I think the things that are, that that we're having to go to additional contractors or subcontractors at this time, I I think those are typically outside of the the spectrum of of services that an engineering firm would would normally provide. There may be some cases where some firms would do inspection services. Maybe they do have, you know, a crawler or something that can go in and and TV the interior of of the pipe, but but that's kind of unusual. I think it's, it is pretty typical that you that you would subcontract or go to a specialist for for that kind of service.
Yeah, depending on the dollar amount, it's got to go to bid.
Okay, I just thought I'd ask that question, whether we're looking for full service and would these people be capable of that?
You know, you know, Andy, it's interesting, like, some firms have good relationships with contractors. Some, some don't want to do that. They 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 shy away from having those relationships with contractors. So it really depends on the firm, but it's, it is, you know, I mean, it's, obviously, they, it's helpful to, if they have subcontractors that can do certain work, that that's helpful to move the process along. And you are right that during the force main evaluation, that was a problem. You know, we were trying to, you know, get people to have have an interest in doing the job and and it's hard to find matchup contractors that are, they're actually interested and they'll actually provide a an estimate, a quote and a competitive quote. So some firms like do have good relationships with contractors, some don't. They, the larger ones tend to, I think shy away from doing that. The smaller ones, medium sized ones, or they 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 sometimes have a relationship with contractors. So.
Yeah, no, they might, they might make a recommendation, but they're, you know, that's the most they usually do.
Correct. Right, they make a recommendation and then.
Yeah, I mean, it's forced.
Go ahead, Andy.
Yeah, this force main issue has been, you know, the one sitting on the top of my my concerns because we are struggling trying to get this last section done so that we can close the books.
Correct.
And.
Right, and I and I agree. And and in my opinion on, yeah, on my opinion, in my opinion, we're going to try to, no matter what we do, we're going to try to complete a any of these projects with our current engineer to the best of their ability. So we're going to have to work through those issues and identify each of the projects that are ongoing and how we're going to complete them. But I agree that, you know, some of these things are dragging on way too long and we need to get them done to move forward. So I I understand your frustration. I'm equally frustrated. I think others are kind of frustrated that things aren't moving as quickly as they should be. So we'll see how things go. I think the next step is that, Danell, any, any other, you want to add anything to that, Danell? You were, or I guess the next step is to notify all these firms and prepare them for the next meeting, which is October 1st, right?
You're on mute, Danell.
I just realized, I was like, oh, yeah, I'm answering this and I'm on mute. Yes, that's correct. So October 1st, I'll reach out to them and let them all know. And then Kristen, I guess you'll get me, well, you have those, I did see your your email with the questions, but if there's any other ones, I'll send, I'll send those over as, I guess, to incorporate, like you said, as part of their presentation or to address those things compared to address.
Right. The other, the other thing, Danell, if they, if they can get us the copies of the presentations prior to the meeting quickly so we can review, obviously, we can, we'll, we'll see the presentation at the meeting. But I think that would be, to me, that would be indicative of how prepared they are. And, you know, if they can get them to us, that that would be helpful so we can at least review them prior to the meeting and so we we could be ready with any, any kind of questions just from that review.
Right.
So any, anything else about these?
I have a question, just to bounce off of what Andy said. Do you think it would be appropriate that if they were asked if there are any particular, then, you know, companies that they do have a relationship with, that they would work with or they would recommend?
Well, it depends on what the project is. If it's an ongoing project, you know, I don't think that's, you know, we're, we're trying to get through, like, the force main project and the evaluation, we're trying to get, we're trying to finalize that.
No, yeah, no, I realize that. I'm just, like I said, just bouncing off of what Andy said. And, you know, as far as having different contractors that some of them they work with and recommend.
Well, I mean, during the, during the process, during the presentation, that's, that's some of the questions you can ask, you know, and you know, I don't have a problem with that.
That's a good way of going about it. It's waiting for it till then. They probably have a list of contractors they work with that they keep on their book, so we can ask them for that after that, during that process.
Yeah.
They could supply.
You might find that most of them work with one or two particular companies.
Exactly.
Right.
Good.
All right. So any other comments before we move on to the next, next part of the agenda? Anything else? Kristen, I just want to say thank you so much. You did a great job. And I'll finish it by saying at the meeting, I'd like you to take the lead since you did a great job. I have no problem with you kind of leading the whole, you know, getting through the presentations. I, now, hopefully, I, you know, you did it, it was outstanding. You put it together real nicely, very professional, transparent.
Good, thank you.
I'm sure everybody agrees.
Yes.
You're all, you, you're all welcome.
Too kind. We're all too kind, right, Kristen?
I guess I would, yeah, and just, just looking forward. I don't know, I, you know, I don't, I think we should kind of start the scoring process anew after, after the interviews. I don't think we should hold ourselves to, you know, what we did in this phase. We're going to, I think, you kind of turn the page and based on, based on the 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 presentation and, you know, and dialogue, then we can, you know, kind of put things in.
Rescore.
Yeah, rescore in in the context and with of of their submittal as well.
Yeah, and I, and I agree with that, Kristen. So we'll interview them on October 1st and then rescore them to make a final decision by, Danell, help me out, is it October 22nd, the meeting? The second meeting?
Yes.
Because there was a conflict with the town council?
Yes, the 22nd.
All right, yeah. So I, so by, hopefully by October 22nd, we'll have a final, and I agree with you. Based on the interviews, October 1st, we'll go through them, we'll, we'll, we'll go out and rescore them again. And then everyone will give, give their opinions and then we'll narrow it down to to get a final selection. That's, that's the, and I, that's all six of us scoring together equally and and then coming to a final determination of who it's going to be.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Kristen, I did make a price table of all of the vendors. They had their price structures all the way in there. Should I share that with you or should I share it with the group? Made a whole table for all of them.
I would, I would share with everybody, Andy.
Okay, this way we don't have to go through all that. You can actually see it on the spreadsheet. So I will send that off
Right.
to Danell for circulation, okay?
Thank you.
Put it in the meeting minutes. Good.
All right. Next on the agenda, number nine, administrator update. Danell, I will turn it over to you. Next on the agenda, number nine, administrator uh update, Danelle, I will turn it over to you.
Sure, just a few things, um and the last one will take a little bit of time, so I'm going to share my screen with you guys um when I get to that point, so. A couple of things, the first thing I wanted to review is the safety review, um I have been updating the PDF, but there were a couple of things before I sent it around to you guys um that I wanted to just go over, so. I did hear back from Sarin regarding um one of the pump stations and one of the pits at the pump stations where railings were required. Um that's not a pump station two, I think it's pump station one that that's the one in question, I have to bring up their review sheet. Um but anyway, she did get back to me on the drawings that she had on file for that pit. Um I spoke with Howie today, he sent me an email and he confirmed um the depth of it is just over six feet, so he had originally thought it was like three to four. Um and actually, Andy, I spoke with you today, but I checked my email later. Uh so he did, he did uh measure it today for me, which is great, and um it's just over six feet, so we'll have to install railing there. I reached out to um RS um Steel, but they don't, they don't install it, but they gave me another vendor that does do some installs, some custom install railings, so. Um I'll be, I'm going to tou- touch base with them tomorrow um to install railing for that, or at least get a quote on it. Um second is the force main eval, uh I know you guys are all aware, um we've gone out to a couple of vendors to find out, to get some. From them, a couple of vendors turned us down, they said they don't handle it, we had one vendor that handles just the CCTV portion. Um so they did come out and visit the site last week, um I did reach out to one of the vendors um that Mike recommended, thank God, they got back. To me and they said that they would handle, they do handle the mechanical portion, um so they came and visited yesterday and I'm hoping to have a a quote from them in the in the next. Few days at least, um so then as soon as I hear from them, we can finally move on this and finally get the force main eval done. Um so that's taken care of, hopefully. Uh we do have a meeting tomorrow with Suez um regarding water connections, so the township and the MUA are meeting with Suez to discuss that, so hopefully I'll have an update about that soon. Um and then second to last, I did review uh information regarding some of our action items for the transfer station, so during our transfer station meeting that we had with um Mountain Creek and um. Wind River, we had a couple of action items, I did reach out um for legal advice on one of the items. Um so I'm, you know, just waiting to hear back from that, and there there's a couple of other things we're waiting to hear back. Um I did get from Mountain Creek uh the Dewberry plant, the original Dewberry review of pump station two. So it's lengthy, I'm in the process of reviewing it, um and I will send that around to you guys if you so wish. Um. Last and not least, um I'm going to share my screen with you. Uh we're going to, I sent around an email to you guys today that had the maps um that Sarin had sent me earlier today. Uh with all of the areas I know we spoke about, um Sarin spoke about it a couple of, I guess, like a month or so ago when she was last on the meeting. Um with regards to the areas that the D the DEP had brought up um for environmentally sensitive areas. Now, when Sarin and I spoke with Paul DiMero, he noted three specific areas that that they would like to see removed. Um from our sewer service area map, um and that's uh and I'll bring the map up in a second, but um this is the thing that I had spoken with you guys about a couple of times, Sarin had confirmed it. Um, you know, we have emails going back and forth with with Paul about what they're, what they were asking for. Um and then I just received these maps today, well, a couple of days ago, I didn't really like the way the map looked, I wanted um a little more information on it, because I couldn't tell where. The maps, like where things were on it. Um so she got them back to me today and uh I'm ju- I'm really not happy with them, um I'm just going to share my screen, you've all seen this, um. Let's see, share. Can you all see that?
It's coming.
Okay.
There it is. Yep.
Yep.
Great. Great, so I'm just going to zoom in. First of all, um the area that we discussed with Paul was very specific about this, which is why I specifically mentioned it in our conversation with my conversations with the board. Um he talked about three specific areas, one area um is uh was kind of like one, almost two areas um off of Sand Hill, to the left of Sand Hill. Which you can see right here, this is the area over by the railroad tracks, and then this area back behind the parking lot, this whole big large area. Um it's in our existing sewer service area, but they did want to see it removed because of the habitat encroachment um for the bobcat and rattlesnake. Um they also said that they wanted to see this area removed down here underneath um all the Black Creek development. Um again, for the same issue with the habitat encroachment, even though it's in our existing sewer service area. And then they were talking about um an area over by the golf course, which I think, I think Andy and I were talking about, it's like over here somewhere.
That's actually the other orange area that you have there on the left, the last one.
This, this one?
Nope, 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 go up to the.
Over here.
Right there, that's lot fif- that's lot fifteen.
Yeah, over here, so like the very, it's almost like the very corner, I guess, of the of the golf course. Um these were the areas that we discussed with Paul DiMero, and, you know, he was very specific about stating these three areas. So when I got not only page two, but page one, and then page three of areas that they were requesting um be removed, I uh. Was.
Oh.
Too happy. Um. Page one, you can see, I don't know if you can tell, but if you um zoom in, which now it's, sorry, I have like a little. Um. So if we zoom in. It's McAfee and ninety four meet right here. Um they're asking, this is Legends property, they want all all Legend property property to be removed from the sewer service area. Um which exists as well as all of these areas down here. Um. They're also asking for, which is the part that's very frustrating, they're asking for um town center areas to be removed. So this area right here, if I can zoom in. This is Acme. They're asking for the area obviously behind the former Rite Aid and all of those back here. These areas they would want removed, which would limit any development on these lots um to areas that are not in the red section. These are vacant lots right now, um if you take a look at the key on any of these pages, anything in yellow is a vacant lot. Um everything that's in the brown dotted line, that's our existing sewer service area, everything red is obviously what they want removed. Um they're asking for all of this in town center.
So so the exist- the existing has been approved, obviously, right?
Yeah, the existing, our existing.
It's it's in our sewer service area al- already.
Correct.
And so so they want us to remove things now because of T and E, threatened and endangered species?
Yes.
It just seems inconsistent with the type, a lot of these parcels, with the type of land use that's immediately there.
Yeah, especially town center. Originally, um not, originally, my understanding was was areas off near Sand Hill Road. Off of Sand Hill Road, down by the train tracks, parts, parts of Legends, which were their, they're on the base of 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 Legends. And areas that were environmentally sensitive, but at no time was I ever under the impression that anything in town center. That they wa- they wanted, they wanted to remove, so. So correct me if I'm wrong, Danelle, is that like all these, the the these three maps, and we need to pu- review pretty carefully. And and have to come to an agreement as an MUA to whether we want to um agree to to remove that from the sewer service area now. I'm not in agreement, I agree with Kristen, anything in that town center. Um I I can't seem to agree with with removing certain areas, e- especially the ones that are already developed.
You know, the areas by.
It doesn't make any sense.
The my, the the area by Legends too, I mean, if that ever, so if anything ever happens there. You know, that's, that's could be a vital hookup to for us.
Yeah, right, it limits, it limits, it limits the pipe, you you have to, you had to, you had to run a pipeline from the hotel. You know, down through, you know, whatever area, and then get to some kind of connection, which is down in the McAfee area. He or whatever, wherever it's going to connect physically, and and that, and if you take, if we remove that area from there, that that may limit any kind of connection to Legends. So those are those, that that's a factor.
You know.
You know, the Legends area.
I I my 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 question is this, so this was all presented however many years ago. It was all given the okay by the DEP and 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 plans were, plans were made, maybe they didn't come to fruition, but plans. Were made based on these areas that were given the okay. What if they had been developed already, were they going to say, oh no, now you now you can't have it, I mean.
Yeah.
Plant plans are made based on these parcels of land have have been, you know, sold or not sold based on the need for sewer hookups. And 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 now they they want to change things, it's not even, it's not even the eleventh hour, it's like three months later, I I you know what I mean?
Right.
This doesn't seem to make any sense at all.
And it's, I'm.
You know.
Do that in, again, in my conversation with him, when we talked with him the end of July, when Sarin and I were on the phone with him, because I wanted to know exactly who he was requesting. Um he said nothing about all of these other parcels, nothing. It was specifically about, oh, there's a, you know, a large area over here, and there's the area over by um the Black Creek development. Um and then part portions of uh of the golf course, and. It was almost like now all of a sudden, everything's changed, and they're just going to wipe out large sections.
Yeah.
And what?
Well, we.
Wouldn't the, what is, wasn't the deals or the contracts with SCUMA based on the potential growth of these areas specifically?
Yeah, and let me, let me, let me, um I was on the water quality management uh uh um group, um which is the county group. Which is the PAC group that was looking at sewer service area map for the entire county. Um back in two thousand twelve, I was, I was on that group for like three or three years, and um that group got the two thousand twelve map approved, that's the last. What I believe is the latest map, or maybe maybe two thousand fifteen, but but um that that is when we added some of the areas we thought were were beneficial to the sewer service area. And they were added into the, into that, agreed upon um by the group, uh endorsed by the freeholders, and then finally approved by the DEP. Now, I I agree with you, I mean, if we don't agree, if if we don't agree with what they're, what they're asking for, we we need to clearly state that in a response to them that. Now, you know, you know, we're willing to remove um certain areas that that makes sense, but some areas we're not, we're not going to remove. So I I think we need in clear writing where these, you know, where these lots and blocks are, where they're located. Um and be, and we have to be careful um as we move forward. Um and we have to take a stance, we have to push back on the DEP, say, we're not, we're 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 not going to accept that. Um now, I know we talked about if we were willing to remove certain areas from the sewer service area, um it would uh it would make the process move quicker. Um but we we ultimately, we have to make a decision on on whether we want to do that. So I I think that has to be, I think we we really need to request that from Sarin, the engineer, Danelle, clearly what what, you know, what we're looking to remove. With with very particular information, so we can make a board decision.
Yeah, so.
I'm not comfortable.
I just want, real quick, um I do have a list of all the blocks and lots um that they were requesting, that she went through, she made a uh spreadsheet. Um I did just reach out to the assessor first, that we had updated block and lot numbers, because she doesn't have the updated list, she based it off an old list that we had. Um so I'm going to get that information and she'll and she'll be able to, you know, um highlight the ones that are going to be removed, that are requesting removal. Um I did speak with her today for a good period of time, and she, I can just tell you, she's really not happy either, because that, this is not what. What we talked about, and she and I are both in agreement, this was not our discussion with the DEP when we spoke with them. Um so she's not happy either, but she did say that in reading his emails, and I agree with her, in reading his emails. He, Paul says, you know, these are, these are the areas that need to, basically, these are the areas that need to be removed, but then he goes, if the board agrees. So it's almost like.
Right.
Um like, yeah, if the board agrees to remove them, um and I think, you know, obviously, it's up to the board, but you, the board, he did say, like, the board has every right to say, no, we don't want to remove them. And I think that the board can say, you know, these are why we don't want to remove those areas, and, I mean, the whole point. Like, I I have a hard time understanding why we have an existing sewer service area that now they want to remove large portions of of the existing sewer service. Um.
Yeah, and then, and at the same time, Danelle, they're holding some of the areas we want to add into the sewer service area hostage until we agree to do this, and I I'm not okay with that.
Right, and even, you know, there are certain things, like she and I went over specifically, like this lot, which again, I don't think, I don't think anyone's too concerned about this lot here. But back when it was first agreed upon, this lot right here, which is back behind um Sand Hill. This this line for our existing sewer service area, the reason why it's cut straight across that lot, and the lot's delineated by the blue line. Um it was cut straight across that lot, because I guess the original conversations with the DEP is that this back area was going to be environmentally sensitive area. So this back area would never be able to develop, which is why we created this line. Now, all of a sudden, they're saying years later, oh, no, none of it, none of it's developable, you can't do anything with it.
True.
So, yeah, it's just, it's not, it's just incredibly inconsistent, um. So again, that's that one lot, right, again, not a big deal when we're talking about, when we were originally talking about three areas.
But it is, it is a big, but it is a big deal, Danelle, because that that particular lot is a farm land that is impacted by the owners who owns that lot.
Right, no, I just meant like in the, like, we were talking about three areas, so I wasn't, we weren't talking about a million, I did not, I did.
Yeah.
I misspoke, so let me just correct that right there, um not that it's not a big deal, um but talking about three areas versus, you know. Large ma- at mass areas of the township, including town center, I think it, um that's, it's just not, it's very disconcerting.
So when you made that, go ahead, Jean.
I just, is that the Kelly Farm that you're talking about, that big?
Yeah, I I believe it is.
Because if that's the case, he actually put himself in 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 that area, I think back in two thousand fourteen or fifteen.
What do you mean, in that area?
He put, I think he put himself in the sewer service area. I think, I think I might have actually.
He wanted, yeah, right, he wanted, yeah, he wanted to add that to the sewer service, so the two thousand fifteen map was the last map, right, Jean? Do you happen to know, I think the last year was two thousand fifteen.
Yeah, if that's the case, Dale Kelly, I remember, I think I'll look through my emails, but I think we have an email that he actually went and he added himself. Because when the town was originally doing it, they eliminated him, and then he went and fought to put that in. But I'll look.
Yeah, right.
If I have the email, I'll send.
Yeah, that would.
So.
Yeah, that'd be helpful, Jean.
So Jean, so he, I guess the thought is, he added himself, he went through the whole process of the DEP himself, and they approved it, but now they want it removed.
Yeah, and I think he, I mean, I I vaguely remember him saying it cost him forty or fifty thousand dollars to do this.
Wow.
Really?
Yeah.
So when we, when they made the these requests, when you had the the meeting with them, Danelle. Um they, we asked them to uh provide the statutory um justification. For the changes that they were requesting, and they did send an email uh to that extent. Um and so how how does this item measure up in in that, or do we just need to revisit that justification?
Yeah, so I did, I did send you guys around um again, their justification, um just so you would have it all in one place, like that email and this email. Um and Rich, I'm going to send that to you so that you can kind of review it too, I. He's, so Paul went through each one of the lines um for the other things that they were justifying, like the Hock analysis. Um and the the letter from um from the county, but in his, in his individual points, I did not. I do not recall seeing anything um with regards to the environmentally sensitive areas, now, he did send an attachment that spoke about um. You know, I guess, being aware of environmentally sensitive areas and take that into consideration, but I didn't see anything that said, like, you have to remove these, um.
Then we're not gonna.
Right.
Yeah.
Then we're not gonna, it it, I mean.
Yeah, right.
It it will, it will have the opportunity, the the endangered species will be, have the opportunity to be revisited during the land use um approval process. For the.
Yeah. Yeah, and I and I agree, Kristen, that that whole process has got to be addressed to to a land use, uh not not, this is not, I don't think this is a sewer service area. Uh, issue, and I, I agree that it had, that those would have to be addressed in that process. I, I think what I'd like to see happen is whatever they're asking us to do is to get an, an opinion from Rich, Wenner, and also an opinion from the engineer in writing what, what, what she recommends based on her review. I think if we can get that back, we, we could make, all of us could make an intelligent decision based on what, what facts that we get from both the attorney and the, uh, the engineer. Does, does, does everybody agree with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely.
So I, so it's good that they're bringing this up. Uh, Denell, just to show a point of reference. This obviously is an o- open issue that needs to be addressed. But the letter from the health department's been taken care of, the Hock analysis has been done. This is the only remaining item, like this is a big item. But this is, this is the only remaining item as far as the process.
Um, I do not think the Hock analysis is done. I think Seren is still working on that.
Oh, he's still working on it?
Yeah, because she had to do.
The Hock now.
She was hoping that, um, part of it was done for the whole town, that our township engineer, um, had some information, but he does not. So she has to do, she has to pull the analysis, I guess, from all the Hocks in town.
Right, okay. All right, so the Hock analysis has to be done and then thi- this has to be determined on, on, you know, what parcels need to be removed and what we have to agree to. So I think the only way we're going to be able to do that is have intel, you know, the, the proper information in front of us so we can make an intelligent decision. Any, any, uh, other questions for Denell?
Oh.
So, so anybody who's, who's on the sewer service area subcommittee, well, we'll be revisiting that and trying to, um, come to some kind of conclusion. A, uh, anything else, Denell, you have?
Uh, that's it right now.
By the way, I did find an email that I did send to Denell.
Okay.
I, I mean, it's from 2014. I don't recall what it says, but just so you have it.
Thanks, thanks, Jean.
Um, I do, I do, one, one small thing too, although it's not very small. Um.
Go ahead.
I reviewed our, um, most recent delinquent list of properties and there is a very large property, um, that owes us a, a lot of money. Um, so we reached out to the attorney, um, to ask him a question regarding, you know, like tax sales, sewer liens, all that jazz. Um, Rich, I just sent you another email, so literally it was just tonight, so obviously I don't expect an answer right now. Um, but, uh, we'll be working on something with that.
But Denell, just for, for the record, what, what's the exact amount? Do you happen to know that? I don't want to put you on the spot, but.
I, I believe it's like a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars currently outstanding.
Right, so, so Rich, we, we want to keep on, uh, looking into that and, and guess, um, what we think is a, a direction on how to move forward?
Yes.
I would appreciate, we can follow up on that, Rich?
Not a problem.
All right, thanks. Any, any questions for Denell? Anybody from the, any commissioners have any particular questions?
Oh, not really.
Okay, we're going to move on to the commissioners' comments and we're going to start with Andy Pittsker.
Can we give the public comments?
I'm sorry, yeah, I was just going to say, you want to open to the public now before the commissioners?
Oh, okay. Um. Um, make a motion to open to the public?
Still moved.
Kristen, make a motion. Anybody second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Dave McDermott, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, aye, any, anybody opposed, abstain? Okay, we'll open it up to the public again. Denell, anybody?
Uh, yeah, Jesse, I think you're, I don't know, I think you can speak now.
Yes, can you hear me?
There you are. Yep.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Have interesting meeting, by the way. I just have, um, one quick question. My question is, why is it that five, nearly six years after the deadline, for all of the people along the sewer line to be connected to the sewers, are there still some that are not? That's it.
Is there any, 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 any particular ones, Jesse?
Um, no, you would know, right? You have the list. I was going to Oprah the list, but I figured I would just ask you tonight. There are still.
Yeah, we are, we are. Yeah, we are looking into those properties that are not physically connected and we're, we're taking, and we're looking into it.
You have an idea of how many total there are?
Denell, would you happen to know?
Um, I need to double check with Seren because I know I've reached out to Seren about, um, the specific ones that are on the map versus what she has on record.
I mean, there were people who were taken to court. There were people who were fined. And I'm just wondering why so many years after the fact, then there are still those that are not hooked up. And I'll, I'll wait then to get that information from Denell. Um, another comment, it's really a question and, um, it only recently occurred to me. Why isn't the entire other side of the road hooked up? I realize that the pipe goes along the, um, we'll say the Taco Bell side. But wouldn't it have made more sense to also have the people on the other side of the road hook up? That would have been so many more users. It would have been a matter of, you know, going across the street.
Yeah, I can answer that question, Jesse. We're, we're aware of that and that's why we're, um, looking into potentially expanding uh, areas and, and putting sewer lines where it makes a lot of sense, where we can get more customers. So that, that is going to be a part of the evaluation for some kind of expansion if we need it.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't want to, uh, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I, I vaguely remember hearing. I, I think that the reason it wasn't put down the middle of the road in 94 was the cost of doing it on a, on a, on a state road. Now, that's a state road, correct? Um, was, was that, was that part of the equation, um, way back whenever this was put in? I think I remember hearing something along those lines and sort of run it from, uh, the other side of 94 and then underneath, like, you know, to tee it down. It would have been, uh, it was, you know, cost prohibitive at the time, maybe. That's, you know, I.
Yeah, that's, that's possible.
I think I remember hearing that.
Well, I.
Yeah, well, they.
Heard that, Paul, and, um, it would have been a matter of taking out a permit to open the road. But even if they didn't do it down the middle of the road, why not somehow connect both sides of the road? That's a lot of.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely. I agree. I, I would, I would love to see that happen somewhere down the line. That's, that's, that's a lot of connections that, that were, that aren't connected.
That's, that was very, very targeted back in, I don't know when it was, oh, eight, oh, nine, you know, very.
Right.
Them. That was it.
All right, thanks, Jesse. I appreciate that.
Jesse, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any, anybody else, Denell?
Um, I don't see anyone with their hand up.
All right, make a motion to close the public?
Motion to close the public?
I'll second it.
Andy Pitt, Andy Pittsker made a motion, seconded by Paul Carney, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? Okay, thank you for that. Wait, okay, now we can go to commissioners' comments. And we'll start with Andy Pittsker.
Oh, thanks, Mike.
You're on.
Yeah, basically, uh, this whole process of the matrix, Christian, has been really good. I've built seven other tabs, no, five other tabs to this, and one is the price tab. I want to share that with everybody now that we both independently have done this matrix because there's some comments in those that might help us in the future. So, Denell, I'll send that spreadsheet to you. Actually, you have it. Maybe you could share it with other people. There for this meeting notes and you have to open it up in Excel and then open up the other tabs to, to look at it. So if anybody's having a problem with that, let's go forward with that. Um, the frustration with the D E P, um, I'm going to give you my personal take on this. And I said it before, I believe we're getting dragged out on this, so we can't get the shut, the shovels in the ground with I-Bank. And I'm getting a little frustrated that we can't get the sewer service area map cleaned up so that we can expand our, our services. And this has been going on for a number of years. So right with you, Denell, it is very, very frustrating, but keep up the work. We've got to tag that one down. That's my comments for tonight.
Thank you, Andy. Uh, next up, Jean Murphy?
I do not have any comment.
All right, thank you, Jean. Uh, Kristen?
Um, regarding, I, just more of a question, um, regarding the interviews for engineers. Um, that has to be remote. There's no way that we can do that in a, in a, in a group setting.
I, yeah, I think it's going to be difficult to get everybody together at the same time.
Okay.
I think that'll be difficult. I mean, I, I, I hear what you're saying. You know, if you do it that way, then it'll be, it'll be two people interviewing them and then it won't be the entire group. I, I, I hear what you're saying, but I, I think it's, to, to do it remotely is probably the easiest way to do it.
I mean, uh, the only other way I could think of doing it, if you wanted to be there in person. And that would be, you know, if the, the firm people wanted to come in too, um, is if everybody doesn't have to be there. Some people could be there in person and others could remote in as well. I mean.
Yeah, that's going to be too hard, right?
I don't know.
It's, it's, it's the hybrid, yeah, it's the hybrid meeting. It's going to be difficult. I guess if we all, we just, okay, so we, we have to, we'll, we'll do it remote. Okay, um, no.
Anything else, Kristen?
No, that's, that's all. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Kristen. Dave McDermott?
Um, I, the only thing I have, I was in to talk, uh, to Denell and we were unable to find the paperwork or the applications for the V F W. So, um, we're in the process of re-getting the paperwork so that we can move forward.
I, I appreciate that, Dave. Thanks for the follow-up. Hopefully you get that paperwork and then we can respond accordingly. Because that, that's, that's something we need to, to finalize and I, I agree. It's unfortunate that we lost that paperwork, but hopefully they get it, they get it the right, the right paperwork and we can, and we can resolve it.
It's embarrassing.
Yes.
It's very embarrassing.
Well, I will say it's very strange too, because we have the actual application and you can see where it was stapled together. And it's checked off, like the paper, you know, the backup, um, diagrams and stuff are attached, but there is nothing attached.
Ah.
So weird.
All right, well, hopefully we get that from them.
Yes.
Anything else, Dave?
Uh, just, I was just wanted to touch base with, with, uh, Denell. Did you by any chance, uh, have a chance to contact them? Or do you want me to follow up with Dean and I'll, I'll get it done?
I actually emailed them. Um, yeah, he, uh, um, Steve Wetzel gave me his card and it has their email, so I emailed them. Um, just kind of hoping to maybe if whoever their engineer is or whoever did the paperwork, maybe they just have it in email format. They could just email it over. Um, yeah.
Okay. I'll, I'll.
One day or Friday last week.
Okay.
One day, um, and I didn't see anything in my email, like I just was looking at it. I don't see anything in my email from them, so I'll give them a call tomorrow.
All right, sounds good.
Anything else, Dave?
No, nothing for me.
All right, thanks, Dave. Paul Carney?
Um, nothing, nothing major or actually, uh, sewer wise. But, um, I was, I was thinking about something the other day. Um, I guess it's kind of a tradition. Um, that's been, that I've witnessed a couple of times since I've been on this board. That, um, outgoing members were given a plaque or, or something along the way. And we've had a couple of people over the last nine months who have left. And I know that COVID has, uh, interfered with a lot of things. But perhaps we should think about, you know, having plaques or something made for the, the past couple of, um, people from the board that, that have left. And give them their, their recognition that we, that other people have gotten over the years.
Right, thanks for bringing that up, Paul. I agree. And, and Paul, would it be John Perry, Ed Seeger and Tom Buckney, or would, would, is anybody else in mind that you're thinking?
Um, I guess we'd have to go back and see who, who didn't get them, um, you know, because it's been a while, but, uh, probably, yeah.
And Angela as well.
And Angela as well. I mean, she was on.
And Angela, you're right, exactly.
And Matt, we, we did say something in one of the meetings about Matt B. Chaney getting a hemiplegic.
He was an unpaid employee, though.
Yeah, that's different.
He, he got, he got a check.
Nice, nice, Paul. Thanks for, thanks for pointing that out. All right, so Denell, can you, i- is it, you know, could you follow up on that? And, and, um, I, I think we all agree that, that we want to recognize all the hard work that everybody does. This is, this is a lot of, people put a lot of time and effort into these boards. Um, we all know that. Uh, we, we need, really need to recognize and appreciate the volunteers. Um, I think we talk about that a lot, but I think it's important. I'm glad Paul brought that up. Anything else, Mr. Carney?
Negative.
Negative? Um, I guess it's to me, um, I did question, I had a question about, we were, uh, possibly into, and this is the question to Denell. Have, is there any update on, uh, interviewing any part-time employees? We, 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 we got some resumes. Is, is anything done about that? Because we, I think we, we decided that it'd be best if we, Howie and you follow up on interviewing.
Yes.
Is there any update about that?
Yes, sorry about that. I should have included that. Um, so we did actually receive another application, um, yesterday. So I was going to forward that over, um, to Andy and to Dave. Um, so Howie and I will be taking over the interviews, but one of the individuals, um, has Howie as a reference. So we will be interviewing, like Howie will not be interviewing that individual. Um, and we plan on setting them up. I was going to set them up for next week, um, after hours. I have to check and see what day works best for Howie to do that. Um.
Okay.
You know, we, we probably could have it here at Town Hall. There's enough space for social distancing in the council room. Um, and you could probably get them done quicker that way. Um, I probably.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
I guess a follow-up on that. Um, the other thing, Denell, I, I, you have, you're catching up on your emails. I was able to find in my files from previously operating the facility, um, we had an operations manual that was done back in 2012. I sent you a Word document. Um, one of the things I'd like to see updated is look at the, um, the operation manual, which is required by the D E P. And have, have Howie look at that operations manual and then add in, uh, all the information for the Sentinel system. So we have a, we have a record of what the Sentinel system is, the, the information that's being recorded and how it fits into the O and M manual. So I think that's critical that we, I'd like you to give that to, to, to Howie and work with him on updating that. And then getting, getting a final copy out to the board and then so they can review it so we, so we know that, you know, we have some kind of official document that shows all the, you know, how we operate and maintain the system.
Okay.
Okay.
Mike, can I make one more request regarding the Sentinel system? Would it be?
But.
Would it be a benefit for all of us to get a, a review of what this actually can do? Whether it's a demonstration so that we all understand how thorough this system can be?
Yeah.
Um, I was.
Yeah, I believe that Denell can do that.
Yeah, I can screenshot everything that I track right now to you guys, so you can see the individual, um, things that it tracks.
Right, because many of those things were not being tracked. It's good.
Right, and then we wanted, we want to document those into the operation manual so you know for each pump station and list station, what, what, what is being tracked. And that's required, it's required to, you know, in an operation manual. So, so we have a little better understanding on how we're tracking it and how we're maintaining the system. All right, is that, that, that's one of the things. The other item, um, I, I wanted to bring this up and, and bring this up, you know, to the M U A. I had a conversation with, um, you know, Jean Murphy this week. She reached out to me. Um, we, we're going to, you know, work together on this. We're happy to have Jean on the M U A. Um, and she probably is going to have some, a lot of, she can be able to contribute a lot to the, with her knowledge of the system from the town. with her knowledge of the system from the town council point of view and from her personal point of view. One of the things that was, that was mentioned that I wanted to clear the air was, if anybody was not familiar, at one time, you know, we had operated the system under, working for Suez, and when it was sold to the MUA for a short period of time, maybe a year or two, we were the operators of record, we were responsible for providing operators to review the system. That relationship ended in, like, 2016, and obviously, I joined the MUA, you know, just recently. So there was, there was some concerns about possible, you know, conflicts from my point of view, whether there are any. And also, my, obviously, we're in the water and wastewater business, we've been doing it for a number of years, and I wanted to just bring that out and ask if there were, you know, and this is, and maybe a question directed at Rich, you know, if there is any kind of potential conflicts, that hopefully, that those will be pointed out to me. I personally don't think there's any, this has nothing to do with, we have no association with the system anymore, we obviously operate similar type systems throughout the state, we have some experience with it, but I do want to bring that out and make it, and, you know, let Rich know that there is something, that there is a potential conflict, I would like to know.
Absolutely.
All right, thanks, Rich. So with that, that's it for me. I have a, you want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn, Mr.?
Good, Dave.
Motion by Dave McDermott, Dave McDermott, seconded by Paul Carney. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? Hopefully, we're not opposed. All right, thanks, everybody, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. And we'll see you, we'll see you next time.
Feel better, Denell?
Thank you.
Feel better, Denell?
Thanks.
Good night, all.